Okay. Good evening to you all. I'm going to call this meeting of the Garner Town Council to order and welcome you all here. Thank you for being here. Most of you are like the council and the mayor, still adjusting to the six o'clock time, but we're getting accustomed to that and it's working out quite well, I think, sure enough. And I should say, welcome to the beginning of spring, I guess, even though this morning didn't feel much like spring to me. But at any rate, it's on the calendar and we'll enjoy it, sure enough. So with all that said, Ms. Clerk, if you will, would you call, excuse me, I don't want to have you call the roll just yet, I want to recognize some people, I'm sorry. Tonight, I'm going to ask you if you can to stand and join me in the pleasure of allegiance. We'll do the roll call after we do this, so stand with me now if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next item of business will be the invocation, and tonight I'm honored to have Reverend Louis Long, who many of you know as a chaplain with our police department. He served them for a long time and he's been a gentleman that I've admired and appreciated for a long time as well. So Mr. Long, if you don't mind, if you would, lead us in our invocation, sir.
Please join me in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for this day you've given us. We thank you also, Lord, for our health, which we don't take lightly these days. We thank you for this meeting, this assemblage of people, Lord, for your blessing on the council members and that you give them our harmony tonight, Lord, as they discuss the business of the town, not only for today but for the future. We ask your blessing too, Lord, on those that will be making presentations, that you will be giving clarity in their presentation and harmony as well in the presentation. Father, we also ask your protection on those that are out serving the community, keeping us safe, Lord, bless them as well. I pray now, Father, you go before us now and bless this meeting, your honor, glory in Christ's name. Amen.
Thanks so much, Mr. Long. I appreciate you coming in. And now I'll ask the town clerk, if she will, to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I am present.
Mayor Proton Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you, council, for being present this evening. So, Ms. Clerk, do we have anybody sign up for petitions and comments?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. So is there anyone here who came for the express purpose of addressing the council on an issue that is of concern to you, not relating to agenda items themselves? If so, raise your hand or I'll recognize you this time. Seeing and hearing none, then I won't read the intro that we usually use for petitions and comments, and we'll move right on to the adoption of the agenda. So, council, you have that before you with the items for the evening meeting. What's your pleasure?
Move adoption, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matthews, Ms. Singleton. So if you favor adoption of the agenda, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, no, and there is none. I have no listing of any presentations on my agenda. Is anybody aware of any? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, very good. Okay, the next item of business is the consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. You've had a chance to look at those unless any council member desires to have one of those items pulled for further discussion, conversation. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Set.
Okay, thank you. Motion properly made and seconded. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposition, vote no, and there is none. Okay, we're going to move to the public hearings. There are three of those on our agenda this evening, and so at least one of those will be a quasi judicial hearing that we will talk further about when we get to that one. But the first one is a voluntary annexation petition at 601 Tryon Road, and I believe Mr. Bowie is going to lead us through that particular presentation. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight I'm going to present annexation dash twenty-three oh one, six oh one Tryon Road. General case information, the property is owned by ZP three-six-three Garner Tryon OZB LLC. Property is located at six oh one Tryon Road. The tract size is approximately twenty-seven point four-two acres. The petition follows a request for public water and sewer at six oh one Tryon Road, CZSP twenty-one oh one and SUP SP twenty-one dash oh eight six oh one, six oh one Tryon multifamily, up to three hundred and thirty-nine units, which was approved on January third, two thousand and twenty-two. Per the Raleigh Garner merger agreement, an annexation petition is required for the extension of service, and the recommendation is to adopt annexation ordinance. And here we have an aerial, site location aerial map. And that is the end of this presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. I'll see if council has any questions to ask of you, sir. Are there any, council? I'll start to my right. Any down here, though? Okay, none. Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if you came this evening desiring to speak on this particular item, now would be a good time to let it be known. Is there anyone? Okay. Council, any further conversation amongst yourselves before I close the public hearing and we'll ask for a vote? Pretty straightforward, so I'll close the public hearing. And you see the action that is recommended, so what is your pleasure?
I move adopting an annexation ordinance two zero two three one five one nine one.
Second. Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any questions?
Just a comment.
Okay.
No, and just for to give the reason is I think that we should have had a little more density at this location. I think in light of what we've been doing on the revenue side and our analysis, it's not really the highest and best use for the town, so it's all a comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dillinger. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, the motion is before you this time. So what is your pleasure? If you're in favor of the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, vote no?
No.
Okay. Motion passes by chair's tabulation of four to one, and so that action is approved. Okay, the next item under public hearings is also a presentation from Mr. Bowie, voluntary annexation, Seventy East Mobile Home Park. Mr. Bowie, I recognize you this time, sir.
Yes, this is the presentation for annexation twenty-three oh two, Seventy East Mobile Home Park. The property is owned by ACG Garner LLC, is located at one hundred Buffalo Road, and the tract size is twenty-six point four-eight acres. This petition follows a request for public water at Seventy East Mobile Home Park. Public sewer is not available. Per the Raleigh Garner merger agreement, an annexation petition is required for the extension of service, and the recommendation is adopt annexation ordinance. Service information, water to be city of Raleigh, master meter, sewer is private, refuse is privately contracted dumpster service, and the streets are private. And we have an aerial photo of the site, aerial map of the site. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Bowie. I'll see if council has any questions for you, sir. Start to my left, Mr. Matthews, anything? Anything?
Mr. Bowie, the main reason for that request annexation is they need public water down there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything, Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dillinger?
Just a question on what, if no, what are the future plans for that area? It's very close to five forty. It's all zoned I two. So I'm curious as to what the long-term plans the property owner has for that property.
They didn't specify that, but the property is ripe for development, and it looks as if it will probably be sold somewhere down the line for redevelopment, but right now I don't know of any immediate plans.
I have a little bit of concern. I drove out there today and just driving through and had some conversations with some of the residents there, and they had noted the property had been purchased by the current owner two years ago, and since that time their lot rents have doubled. They did mention also trouble with the water, which is probably one of the reasons, the other is to make it have, connect to water. Some of those people have lived out there for thirty years, they said, and these people are now going to be in, they're going to be our residents now if we approve this, and none of them were made aware of this annexation. It's not required by our UVO to send posted mailed notices or post signs out there, but they hadn't heard anything of it, and I think that's really, if their lot rents have gone up already, now we're going to throw Garner taxes on top of the property. I just have concerns that we're almost inadvertently setting ourselves up for a Seventh Avenue surprise, where all of a sudden in three or four months or a year, this room is full of other people who live out there, wondering why they're getting kicked off a place they live for so long. Now, which the applicant, we're here, I mean, I just have more insight into what their plans are and what their plans are if they do plan on selling the property and upfitting it or whatever, what their plan is for engaging the residents there to transition them in a way that is considerate, I guess. So like I said, I'm, I'd like to, just me would like to talk more with the applicant to see what their plans are, because again, these are going to be our residents once this annexation goes through.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment on that?
Sure.
I've got some friends that live down that way, and the same people got that, it's my understanding, has the other one on Highway seventy, and what's happening is the, they're converting all this into more like a camper trailer type park. It's more business oriented because people are coming in town, working for long term or just a sign of times things are changing, rather than the traditional mobile homes as we know it. It's more of, much like that on Buffalo Road, right outside of town.
About a quarter of them are travel trailers.
Yeah, and that's their intent. They bought it for that purpose and to develop it into that. Unfortunately, some of the folks who've been there a long time kind of got caught in the middle of it, and I'm not saying that's good or bad, but that's kind of, that is what their plans are, is to make it just like the one up there on Highway seventies. So that seems to be the trend nowadays, and plus they want to make it nicer, my understanding. So if that sheds any light on that, I just want to share that.
Okay, thank you. I did ride to the area myself, just to familiarize myself with it, and obviously it's a mix of camper types and then regular mobile homes, it appears, and I believe it's been in existence for, what, many years there? Gray would know.
Over fifty years. Yeah, it was Buffalo Mobikers, many, many years.
Okay. Next to the storage place out there, yeah. Okay. So hearing, any other comments?
Yes, question in reference to the location of utilities now, can you give us a general idea in reference to what they would have to tap into, what they had to bring it to, or they would just tap into the existing?
They want, they will have a meter out at the right of way, just that one meter to service everything, rather than, City of Raleigh will not allow them to have service on each individual unit, so they'll have a meter right out, right at the right of way.
City of Raleigh utilities, utilities already in place when they would tap into?
Yes, sir.
For water, but there is no sewer at that location, Mr. Vance?
No sewer, just water. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else have a question for Mr. Bowie? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. And is there anyone else who came this evening wanting to speak on this issue as part of the public hearing? Okay, don't see anyone.
I'd really like to hear from the applicant, just to know what their plans are. Again, we're going to grow and that's fine. This is the area that we need to do that kind of growth. So I would, I'd make a motion to continue this to the next meeting so that we can hear what their plans are long-term. Again, these are going to be our residents soon, so I'll make that motion.
Okay. Council, there's a motion before you. Is there a second?
I'll second it and we'll see where it goes.
Okay. All right. Motion is properly before you this time. Before I ask for a vote, I'll see if council wants to have any further comment, discussion on the matter. Mr. Attorney, I guess, obviously if we continue this, the invitation would be sent to the owner or someone representing the owner to come to the meeting. I don't know if we can compel them to do that, but I'm assuming that would be a proper thing to do.
Right. No further notice would be required, and just for the record, the next meeting would be Tuesday, April fourth, at six P M., the next regular meeting. However, certainly the applicant can be made aware that council would like to speak to that person, and then it's at their own risk if they don't appear.
Okay. All right. So if the motion passes, it sounds like the reasonable time would be to have the April fourth.
Mr. Mayor, we didn't vote on that.
I know, I know. I said if the motion passes.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, occasionally I do miss something, but, okay. Anything else? Okay.
Question, is it unusual to ask the applicant to come in for annexations to state future use that may not be developed at this point?
Got a question for me?
Yes.
Yeah. In some jurisdictions, they, it's customary that the applicant be present, you know, at all hearings, or they run the risk of being denied because questions aren't answered, but I don't know that there's any reason why they have to provide their future intention for the property. They may be willing to share that, or they might not, but the question can be asked. I don't know that you can compel them to answer the question.
Next question is, we possibly could be in the same situation if the applicant does not say, I want to come for you, for the annexation, for the annexation review, we would still be at the same place of not being able to answer questions that are currently being posed, if the applicant doesn't show up on April fourth.
Right, that's a possibility.
And we will move forward with the current information we have right now as to the current use of what's proposed. Question for the attorney.
I'm sorry, the question?
Question is that if we're in the same place we are next month, we'll move forward with the information we currently have to make a decision as to whether to approve the annexation based upon the current or proposed use of the chapping into the water.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vance, appreciate it. Anybody else question, comment? All right. The motion before the council at this time is to, I believe the term was to continue the manner to, and the attorney suggested that the next meeting would be, a reasonable time would be April the fourth. So if you are in favor of that motion, you can vote aye at this time?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, okay. If you oppose the motion, vote no. Okay. So the motion carries, and I suppose someone, I don't know, it would be somebody planning or someone would notify the owner of the desires of council on the matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. Okay, so we'll take this up again then on the fourth unless there's some reason not to. Okay, we are now to the second item under, excuse me, yeah, I'm sorry, I marked the wrong one. We're now on item three, special use permit, SUP SP two-two-zero-four. This is a special quasi judicial hearing, and so I want to read the prefacing information as it relates to that, and then we will look to swear witnesses on this particular one. So special use permits require a quasi judicial hearing, and all persons wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in by the town clerk. The staff report is offered as evidence in the case and will be accepted to the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or another person of standing. Each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed, number one, has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or has had any ex parte communications, or has any close familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person, or has a financial interest in the outcome of the case. This is a fact finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to the impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members must disclose any information received or discussions pertaining to, excuse me, pertaining to the case outside of the hearing. And so at this time, council, I will ask you, do any council members wish to make a disclosure based on the information that I've shared with you? Are there any? Okay. All right. So those of you who expect to give testimony of this case, if you would please go back and see the clerk, and she will have you all sworn in at this time. Thank you.
Okay, do you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, thank you all, and so at this time, I will call on the town to make its presentation on the matter, and that would be Ms. Jones, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
I thought it was pulled up, forgive me. I am here to present Garner Station Lots one oh six and one oh seven, the special use permit, SP, SUP, SP twenty-two zero four, and this project was tabled from the February twenty-first meeting to today's meeting, just to give you a background. The applicant is BPG Management of NCLC, the RD, excuse me, the owner is RDU Land Management property owner, and this particular project is located at twenty-four hundred and twenty-five hundred Garner Station Boulevard. The tract size is eight point eight one acres, and their request is to establish a one hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet office and warehouse building, and this project area can be further identified by Wake County PIN numbers zero seven nine one nine eight eighty-two zero two and zero seven nine one nine seven seven nine four zero. As I said earlier, the proposed use is office and warehouse. This plan was submitted prior to the townwide new UVO adoption, so when this plan was submitted, it was zone service business conditional use twenty, and as of the new adoption of the UVO, is now zone light industrial, steel conditional use zoning twenty. It's not an overlay district. The setbacks for this project is thirty-five feet for the front, zero or twenty-five feet for the rear side, zero twenty-five in the corner, and thirty-five feet. Neighborhood meeting was held on June twenty-ninth at the Royal Blue Event Center at six P M. One person was in attendance, Ms. Sarah Broyer, she's director of real estate at the Monument Property, and there were fifteen properties identified and notified by first-class mail notices. And here is a copy of the overview of the site. And this is one of the elevations for the site. The building will be constructed of concrete mall panels and aluminum storefront and steel canopy. Open space, the park and open space are now not, excuse me, parkland and open space requirements are not required for non-resident
I thought it was pulled up. Forgive me. Thank you for your patience. I am here to present Garner Station lots 106 and 107, the special use permit, SUP SP 2204. And this project was tabled from the February 21st meeting to today's meeting, just to give you a background. The applicant is BPG Management of NCLLC. The RD, excuse me, the owner is RDU Land Management Property Owner, and this particular project is located at 2,400 and 2,500 Garner Station Boulevard. The tract size is 8.81 acres, and their request is to establish a 139,500 square feet office and warehouse building. And this project area can be further identified by Wake County PIN numbers 0791-988202 and As I said earlier, the proposed use is office and warehouse. This plan was submitted prior to the townwide new UDO adoption. So, when this plan was submitted, it was zone service business conditional use 20, and as of the new adoption of the UDO, is now zone light industrial, still conditional use zoning 20. It's not an overlay district. The setbacks for this project is 35 feet for the front, 0 or 25 feet for the rear side, 0 or 25, and a corner is 35 feet. Neighborhood meeting was held on June 29th at the Royal Blue Event Center at 6:00 PM. One person was in attendance, Ms. Sarah Broyer, she's the director of real estate at the Monument Property. And there were 15 properties identified and notified by first-class mail notices. And here is a copy of the overview of the site. And this is one of the elevations for the site. The building will be constructed of concrete mall panels, aluminum storefront, and steel canopy. Open space? The park and open space are now not, excuse me, parkland and open space requirements are not required for non-residential development. The tree coverage, they're required to save, the required tree coverage, 12.75. They are preserving 10.28% of existing landscaping, and they're adding an additional 3.47%. Totaling 3.13.75% of tree coverage. And the perimeter and street buffers, the street buffer along Garner Station Boulevard is 15 feet wide, and the perimeter buffer are 25 feet in the western, 15 on the southern, and seven and a half on the northern side. Lighting? The lighting is meeting the UDO requirements along with staff policies as far as the LED fixtures. All fixtures have up light and low glare, a warm temperature exhibiting the color, excuse me, warm light exhibiting color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. Parking for warehouses based on one space per 5,000 square feet. A floor area and parking for offices, one space over 300 square feet. They're required to have 89 parking spaces, and they're providing 90. The inspectors department, along with the fire department, has reviewed and approved this plan. Site does not contain any FEMA flood plane. However, the new street buffers do exist on this plan. There's no development being proposed in any of the environmentally sensitive areas. However, if something does come up where they do need to impact those areas, they're required to have permits from that state or federal agency prior to us allowing them to receive building permit. Stormwater management. Garner lots 106 and 107 is a commercial development site located within the water section, water shed protection area, and is subject to the stormwater quality requirements for the nitrogen and 85% TSA removal, as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. This particular development is planned to use an existing wet retention pond built for several lots for this area out there in Garner Station Boulevard. That's the area which this project is behind the gates and all that, and the caries, like the industrial part of Garner Station Boulevard. So, those particular lots, there's already existing stormwater pond built for that. So, they will use that existing stormwater pond. This device will satisfy the water quality and quantity requirements, and a nitrogen offset payment will be required as a part of this development. The parcel will be connected to City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer System. The infrastructure for voting sidewalks, curb, gutter, and sidewalk currently exist on Garner Station Boulevard. The curb cutout for lot 107 is currently opposite of next place circle, the apartments that cross the street, and will be relocated further south as a part of the project. The curb, gutter, and sidewalk will be removed and added as needed. And after reviews of the plan, this project is considered approvable long as the following site-specific conditions are met. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the engineering inspection fee shall be paid to the town of Garner, and the engineering department shall be in receipt of the nitrogen offset payment. And prior to construction document approval, final plat of the recombination of the two lots of 106 and 107 shall be recorded with a Wake County register deed. Prior to issuing the building permit, revised plans meeting additional project-specific conditions shall be submitted and approved by the technical review committee. And the developer and their attorney is here for questions, and they also have a presentation as well. So, I'm going to stop mine right here and pull up their presentation. Oh, you can ask me questions, I'm sorry. You have questions on my cell. I don't want to run the beat, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
I'm here for questions, and if none for me, then they are here too.
All right, yeah. We surely will hear from them in just a minute, but let me see if council has any particular questions for you, Ms. Jones. I'll start with Ms. Berry, just to my right. Okay, Mr. Singleton, to my left.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dallinger.
A question on finding five about compatible and adjacent uses, and in the staff report in our packet says the project came in as two buildings on two lots initially, and then it's turned into a, well, it says, "The resulting building is a scale and dimension three times that of what has been built to date." And then it says, "Staff expressed their opinion that this change in scale and dimension warranted further discussion about the length of uninterrupted facade and roof line along Garner Station Boulevard monotony along the public street. There were no additional guidelines offered by the applicant, although suggested language was provided." I'm curious as to where those conversations ended up, or what the recommendation or suggestion from staff was for that facade?
So, the conversations were, we talked to the applicant about providing a break in the mass of the building. So, the new UDO says that for every 100 feet, there should be a 10-foot break, so to speak. I'm saying break. It may be, from right here, the building may go up for 10 feet and come back down, or it may go down 10 feet, however they, you know, the person would like to do it. That was the suggestion that we had with them. They're here to answer some questions, but I don't think that that has been completely ruled out. I don't want to talk for the applicant, but that was the gist of the conversations for that particular comment in the staff report.
Thank you.
Mr. Vance, anything?
Just one question. You mentioned the new UDO. Did this come under the old UDO?
Yes, it did.
Okay. No more questions?
All right. Anything? Okay. Then I guess we will hear from the applicant representative. You'll come forward and state your name and address. We'd appreciate it. Good to see you again.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Isabel Maddox, PO Box 946, Raleigh 27602. Mr. Mayor and members of the town council, happy to be here tonight. I'm representing applicants RDU Land Property Owner LLC and BPG Management Company. The applicants for the special use permit to develop a warehouse and office use on Garner Station Boulevard. And as staff indicated, this is a special use site plan. It's a quasi-judicial mode. We will be providing evidence to allow you to make the eight required findings as required by the UDO. Just to respond to the question that Councilman Dallinger asked about the massing of the building, there is a requirement under the new UDO that there'd be some roof articulation. The original staff report intended to apply that, and we objected because we're not under that UDO. However, that said, we are going to offer a condition tonight to satisfy a condition, provide a condition that will offer some roof articulation, and we'll get to that a little bit later. So, I think we are addressing it, and we don't think it's required, but we are addressing it as a way we will mitigate the massing of the building. So, as Allison told you, we're talking about 139,000 square feet on Garner Station Boulevard. It's part of an existing industrial park, Lincoln Park South, it's been there for a long time. I'm going to have three witnesses tonight. First, I want to introduce all my members of my team, Gerald Tuggle with BPG, Peter Shatz, asset manager of Equus Capital, David Lasley, our site planner of Piedmont Land Design, and Colton Clifton of BPG, a licensed real estate broker. And so, first I'd like to call on Mr. Shatz to just tell you a little bit about his company and the project briefly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shatz.
Thank you. My name is Peter Shatz. I am currently a vice president and asset manager for Equus Capital Partners. Equus is a real estate fund manager based in Philadelphia with over 40 years of experience, and we currently have $8 billion in assets under management. I've worked for Equus for the last 16 years, almost 17, and I've been with the portfolio, which I'll bring up in a little bit, for the last six years. BPG Management NC, which is the applicant in this matter, is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Equus Capital Partners, and they provide the management and leasing services for our local, what we call Raleigh portfolio, as well as some additional assets in other markets in the southeast. Our affiliated companies since 2001 that oversee development, we've developed over 20 million square feet in that time, including projects in Raleigh, Meben, Greensboro, and Charlotte. Lincoln Park South, which is the business park where this project would become part of, has been owned by an affiliate of Equus since January of 2006. And in the Raleigh portfolio that I mentioned earlier, we currently have about 2.7 million square feet of properties that are all similar business park, industrial flex, whatever you want to call that. We are requesting this, the special site use permit approval for this particular project tonight containing the approximate 139,500 square feet, which will be located in Lincoln Park South on Garner Station Boulevard. We have not signed any leases yet for that development. We would anticipate that that would be a single tenant, or possibly max two or three tenants that would go in that project. Thank you. Any, oh, any questions?
Okay. Questions for this witness down here? Any? Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So, next I'd like to call David Lasley, who has primarily designed this site plan. David has, he's going to hit, we talked about the fact that there are eight findings, and maybe before David comes up, just hit those really, you know, quickly. So, there's the first finding, proposed use will not endanger public health and safety. Second one, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. Proposed use will comply with all applicable provisions of the UDO. Use is consistent with transportation plan, other relevant adopted plans and policies. Proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of building scale, site design, buffering, screening, operating characteristics. Finding six, any significant impacts will be mitigated or offset. Seven, public safety, transportation, and utility facilities will be available to serve the subject property. Eight, adequate assurances of continuing maintenance will be provided. So, our experts are going to address those. Mr. Lasley will be addressing the bulk of those, because he's done the bulk of the site plan design. Mr. Clifton will be addressing compatibility and the real estate impact, value impacts. And Mr. Shatz, on behalf of the owner, will be addressing the one about continued maintenance. So, Mr. Lasley?
Yo. David Lasley, 8522 204, 6 Forks Road, Raleigh, North Carolina 27615. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us tonight. I apologize upfront, we'll have to repeat a lot of what's already been said, just because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and Allison's gone through a lot of the findings. I will be doing the same thing, too. So, I am a land planner, for over 40 years of experience as a site plan designer and consultant in North Carolina and other states. I've worked on hundreds of site plans in North Carolina, including many here in Garner. I have a bachelor's science in architectural engineering from Kansas State University, go Wildcats. Employment included 17 years as an engineering designer and land planner for Raleigh Architectural Firm EnviroTech Inc., and 23 years as a partner and principal site planner for Piedmont Land Design. I have significant experience in preparing and modifying site subdivision plans in order to conform to applicable regulations and ordinances of various municipalities in North Carolina, including Garner. On behalf of BPG Management NC LLC, RDU Land Property Owner LP, I have worked on the special use site plan for the proposed industrial warehouse project identified as SUP SP 2204. In my professional opinion, the site plan meets all the requirements for a special use site plan under Section 3.9.2 of the former version UDO, which is the legacy UDO, the rules of which apply to this SUP SP 2204, which was submitted on March 3rd, 2022, prior to the new UDO approval in July of 2022, which is the new UDO. And subsequently revised per staff reviews, the latest revisions being December 22nd, 2022. All UDO references contained herein are to the legacy UDO. In my professional opinion, the site plan complies with all applicable provisions of the legacy UDO, including those provisions addressing buffers and setbacks, utilities, road improvements, parking, lighting, outdoor operations in stormwater, and thus will not injure the value of adjoining or budding properties. I'd like to take each one of those individually. Regarding buffering, the site plan includes a perimeter buffer that varies between 7.5 and 84 feet wide. Number two, the tree coverage area of 10.28%, which is in excess of the minimum 10% required by the legacy UDO. Regarding utilities, the development shown on the site plan will connect to City of Raleigh Public Sanitary Sewer and Water Systems through existing infrastructure, and will not place undue burden on existing infrastructure. Regarding road improvements, the site plan will include right-of-way improvements for Garner Station Boulevard, including a five-foot accessible sidewalk, curb, gutter, and restriping along Garner Station Boulevard right-of-way. These improvements will enhance overall traffic circulation, accessibility, and pedestrian connectivity. Regarding lighting, the site plan will mitigate impacts. Through the proposed lighting, it meets the requirements of the Town of Garner lighting ordinance and staff recommendations for LED fixtures. The minimum lighting levels will be maintained for pedestrian and employee safety. There will be no direct glare from fixtures to public right-of-way or adjacent properties. Regarding parking, the site plan will satisfy the legacy UDO parking requirements based on square footage and expected use without excessive spaces. Adequate onsite parking will be provided to prevent off-site impacts to public infrastructure and adjacent properties. Regarding operations, most operations will occur inside the buildings, limiting impacts of noise, dust, and odors. There may be limited outdoor storage as allowed under the legacy UDO with forklift use. Forklifts are typical, gas-powered, very quiet, and such uses will be screened in accordance with the legacy UDO requirements. Regarding stormwater, the project is not located within the watershed protection area, and the site plan meets all stormwater requirements of the legacy UDO, and proposes to use a combination of the existing shared wet pond located north of the site, and a new underground sand filter system to be located in the parking lot near the northeast corner of the site. These facilities will treat impervious surface runoff for nitrogen and water quality and quantity control for the 10, for the 1-year, 10-year, and 25-storm events, and compliance, again with the legacy UDO. In my professional opinion, the site plan is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of site design, buffering, and screening, and operating characteristics. The proposed use is compatible with the other existing industrial buildings in Lincoln Park South. The closest residential use is an apartment complex located approximately 500 feet from the subject site, and the closest single-family home is located approximately 900 feet away, across railroad tracks and heavily wooded land. Any adverse impacts on adjacent residential uses and/or natural environment will be mitigated through buffers, street trees, and other landscaping setbacks, lighting controls, and stormwater control measures shown on the site plan. Therefore, as a result of such improvements and mitigation measures, it is my professional opinion that development in accordance with the site plan will not endanger public health or safety, and will not be overly burdensome on existing public safety and utility services in the area. In my professional opinion, the site plan is consistent with the spirit and purposes of the legacy UDO. The subject property was zone service business at the time of the site plan submission. The subject property was zoned service business at the time of the site plan submission. Such zoning allows a variety of industrial uses, including warehouses, flex space, and other industrial uses. Accordingly, the project is permitted by the existing zoning. In my professional opinion, the site plan is consistent with the spirit and purpose of the original 1998 Town Council-approved plan for Lincoln Park South. The original master plan for two 50,000-square-foot warehouse buildings, totaling 100,000 square feet with a dimension of approximately 110 feet by 455 feet each. What is now proposed is a recombination of those two lots, 106 and 107, into one lot and construction of one 139,500-square-foot building with a dimension of 310 feet by 450 feet. The combined original building's frontages facing Garner Station Boulevard totaled 220 feet. The new building is 310 feet. That's a difference of only 90 feet or a 29% increase. In my professional opinion, the site plan is consistent with the goals of Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan designates the subject site as light industrial, as a light industrial center, which contemplates warehousing, light service, and manufacturing, distribution, and medical research lab space. This property is within a larger mixed-use focus area which contemplates complementary land uses, including places to live, work, and play, including employment areas. The site plan proposes a light industrial building, which will utilize Garner Station Boulevard as a resource and enhance the Garner Station Opportunity Area by providing jobs and tax base for Garner and connecting to Raleigh. Accordingly, the site plan is consistent with the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you for your time. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lasley. Counsel, questions for Mr. Lasley? Let's start with Mr. Vance.
Lasley, you mentioned something about adjustments to tree canopy? Adjustment to the...
So we, so we have a tree canopy or tree coverage requirement of 10% of the land area. We are at 10.28%. In the orig, I believe in the original staff report, it was indicated as being higher than that. I just want to point out, it's 10.28%. We're still above the 10% minimum that was required with the legacy UDO.
Okay, Mr. Dillinger.
Just a couple of questions. So the application came in on March 1st, 2022. The new UDO was adopted on July 5th, 2022. At what point did you change from the two-building to lot configuration to the single-building configuration?
My goodness, we've been working on that for several years even before that.
When was it presented to the town as a single building?
It would have been the, yeah, with the submission of the site plan in March of 2022.
So, I guess my confusion is, this two lot, two-building configuration, where does that come from?
I think that was the original, the original approved plan back in, was that then?
1998.
98.
Was the two built, was the two building.
Showed two buildings. That was, you know, so a long time ago. Fast forward 25 years, and we're coming in with just one building. It was never a site plan, it was just a layout of the, of the Lincoln Park South.
And I guess my other question is, you know, staff seems to have, in their professional opinion, indicated that the scale of the building creates an incompatibility with regards to building scale and site design, which would then sort of, my question then would be on finding six, sort of a negative significant impact. How are you going to mitigate that incompatibility?
So I guess the question of that would be, what would it be negatively impacting? It is an industrial park, and the industrial park is owned by the developer who's developing this building. That would, that would be one point. There's nothing that would prevent a building of this size under either UDO. It's an industrial park. They've done a great job with the industrial park. They certainly wouldn't put a building such as this in their park if they didn't feel it was compatible. And they also have to adjust, and Peter may speak to this later, about the market, marketability of the spaces that they're seeing. Remember, this, this plan was originally sought out in, well, it was originally approved in 1998 and set up to be basically just the same buildings set around Garner Station Boulevard. And things have changed a little bit over 25 years, yes.
But, but I do want to add that we have, we are agreeing to add a condition about roof articulation, which we think does mitigate the, the impact of that. And that will be along the street, each, the east-facing street front. And the condition we want to propose, I was going to wait till we get the conditions, but let me just read it out to you. As to the roof line of the east elevation front in Garner Station Boulevard, a minimum two-foot vertical projection extending for a minimum of 10 feet shall occur at least every 90 feet along the east elevation. And prior to the issuance of a building permit, we will submit revised plans showing this roof articulation.
Has that been reviewed by staff? Submitted to them and reviewed?
It hasn't, because we haven't submitted it yet. We were just going to submit it at this hearing to try to mitigate. But I think that the, under the new UDO, the requirement is, I think it's two-foot projection for 10 feet every 100 feet. Isn't that right?
The projection part, I'm not sure, but I know every 100 feet, 10 foot.
Yeah, and we're going, we're going to do every 90 feet, and we're going to do a 10-foot expanse of a projection. And I actually have some exhibits I can hand out. Before I do that, I want to call up Colton Clifton, who's a licensed real estate... Are you, I'm sorry, you finished?
I wasn't, I wasn't the last one, so.
I think I'm too, Ms. Behringer, Mr. Seaman. All right, I believe we've covered everybody. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Colton Clifton. I'm a commercial real estate broker with BPG. I've been working in commercial real estate for roughly 12 years, 11 of which have been with BPG Management. My focus has been primarily on flex and industrial throughout my career. This, the subject property is located within Lincoln Park South. Peter and David touched on the park briefly. I'll touch on it again. It's a well-established, well-established flex and industrial park. Most of these buildings were constructed between the late 90s and early 2000s and have been professionally managed and maintained since being built. The vast majority of the uses in Lincoln Park South and in the general area are industrial in nature, so any effects from industrial flex uses have existed for quite some time. Lydix Place Apartment Community to the east is roughly 500 feet away. That apartment community is oriented in a completely different direction than the property that we're proposing to build. The single-family properties to the west are located on the other side of the railroad tracks and are heavily buffered by a stand of trees. These homes are not oriented towards the subject property. As I mentioned previously, considering that the general area has been heavily oriented towards industrial uses for many years, the impacts related to any industrial uses existed and already exist. And after reviewing the proposed site plan and investigating the subject property and surrounding areas, it's my opinion that the proposed project is compatible with the area and will not have a negative effect on the value of the neighboring properties.
Okay, let's see if there's any question for you, Mr. Clifton. Gray, anything? Any down here? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, now I want to call Peter Shatz back to the stand to just address finding number eight about maintenance, continued maintenance.
Thank you again. So as to the legacy UDO standard 3.9.2.8, on behalf of the ownership and the management, I can confirm that adequate funds will be available to maintain the property. We will engage professional management and ensure the property is well-managed and well-maintained, and continue that as we've been doing since 2006. And lastly, if I can peel this off, management will include the exterior of the buildings as well as landscaping, signage, parking, and traffic management on the property. Thank you. Any questions for me?
All right, questions? None? Any? None? Okay, none?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir, very much. Appreciate it.
I do have these exhibits. And, you know, as I look at the exhibit, this, this actually, even though these were very small, it's really a little bit better than what I said. So what we would do is a two-foot vertical projection extending for 12 feet at least every 90 feet. So pass these out or...
Yeah, you can, yeah, I'll just pass.
I'll be giving to staff so they can look at it as well.
So if we go back through the, the required findings, finding number one, the proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety. Mr. Lasley confirmed to you that there are many protections, you know, for traffic safety and for stormwater maintenance that should protect the public health and safety. The second finding, the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties. Mr. Clifton indicated that he's evaluated the area, and I think it's important to note that this area, industrial impacts already exist. And so there's not really any new impacts created. And we're surrounded, we're in the middle of an industrial park. The closest residential are good, good distance away. The proposed use will comply with the all applicable provisions of the UDO. Your staff report confirms that. Allison has confirmed that. David Lasley has confirmed that. Proposed use is consistent with the transportation plan and other relevant adopted plans. David Lasley spoke to that, including the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. Finding five, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of building scale, site design, buffering, screening, operating characteristics. And, you know, I think David spoke to that. Mr. Clifton spoke to that. And we, we're offering the condition up to try to mitigate any impacts in terms of building scale. Any, finding six, any significant impacts resulting from the use we mitigate or offset, including impacts on the natural environment. And we've told you about stormwater management. There's an existing stormwater pond, about tree conservation. Number seven, the public safety, transportation, utility, facilities, and services will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service. There are existing City of Raleigh public utilities in the ground. Those will be used. I don't think there's any capacity problem that we're aware of. And then adequate assurances of continuing maintenance. Mr. Shatz has told you that his company has maintained this park and will maintain this building and has been doing a lot of maintenance of these buildings for a long time and have been doing it well. So I think with that, we believe we have presented competent material and substantial evidence that we meet all the standards of the legacy UDO and thus are entitled to the special use permit with a few conditions, most of which have been indicated by staff as being necessary here. The first is, prior to issuance of a building permit, engineering inspection fees should be paid by the Town of Garner. A nitrogen offset payment must be made to an approved mitigation bank and confirmed by Garner Engineering. Another condition would be, prior to construction document approval, final plat of recombinations shall be recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. Third condition is the roof articulation condition, which I mentioned. And I want to, as to the roof line of the east elevation front in Garner Station Boulevard, a minimum two-foot vertical projection extending for a minimum of 12 feet shall occur at least every 90 feet along the east elevation. And prior to the issuance of a building permit, revised plans showing that roof detail shall be submitted. Finally, prior to issuance of building permit, revised plans meeting any additional project-specific conditions, which we include that one, shall be submitted and approved by the Technical Review Committee for Garner Staff. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. Our whole team is available for, to answer any questions that y'all might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thorough presentation, I believe. I'm not sure I kept the count, but under the recommendations for the, for the conditions, there were four recommended, I guess, by the town. And were there two others that you... One other. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is it five specific conditions with the additions that we're talking about?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, we had three or four, now it's five.
The, the fourth one encompasses the condition of whatever, you know, we agreed upon tonight. What was provided tonight will be reviewed by town staff. So the fourth one is that one encompasses everything. So there's only four conditions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, yeah. I miscounted, I think. Okay, thank you. So this is a public hearing. We've heard from the applicant. There was anybody else from the applicant? I assume not. Is there anyone here who desires to speak on this matter at this public hearing? Okay, seeing and hearing, none. Counsel, do you have any final questions for the applicant? None? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion in regards to this matter if you desire to have a discussion amongst yourselves or comments. Now would be a good time for that. Anybody? All right, then, an order, excuse me, a motion is in order at this time. I'll call on counsel for a motion.
I move the filed application SUP SP 2204 meets the Town eight criteria for a special use permit as identified in Article 3.9.2. D. Therefore, I move that the Town Council approve SUP SP 22-04, Garner Station lots 106 and 07, with the, is it four? With the four site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Suck it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. Matthews for the second. Okay, counsel, do you have the matter properly before you this time? Any final thoughts or discussion before I call for the question? Okay, hearing none. If you are in favor of the motion before you, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, you should vote no. Okay, chair declares that the motion passed unanimously by the council, and it is approved. Thank you for your, for your good presentation and the rather good way that it was presented to us and laying it all out. Thank you very much. We wish you the best with the project. Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, counsel. Are we at new and old business? I don't believe there is any. So are there any committee reports at this time?
Yes, sir. On the HR committee, met last week to discuss the vacancies that are on the various boards and commissions, and we'll be coming, we'll be reviewing the applications, going through interview process possibly with some of the applicants, and we'll be reporting back as we proceed forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. Important committee, and we appreciate the work you're doing. And we'll look forward to, to your report.
Mr. Mayor, the Veterans Committee also met this week and had a very good meet, good attendance, and as we're looking at upcoming events to include Moral Day as well as Veterans Day and, and working with staff and getting things together and organized, and went extremely well. So that's all I had on that report.
Okay, appreciate it. And as we get closer to that occasion, we'll perhaps hear from you further. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick, quick report from the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I just want to commend them on their diligence in getting a lot of grant money from lots of different sources. Didn't bring my agenda from the meeting we had yesterday, but there's another $300,000 grant that we'll have a little match to, but I can't remember what it was from. But it's, every meeting, there seems to be a good effort out there to get other grant funds in for Parks and Rec. So just want to make everyone aware. They're doing a great job.
Mr. Dillinger, that additional grant dollars is a part of grant that we received in order to...
in order to install a playground at the recreation center. So we've been very successful in leveraging some grant dollars for some additional projects to Parks and Rec.
I think a match for that one's like $80,000.
It's, it's a very good match for that one. So it's, yeah, so it's, it's minimal compared to the investment.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, I think, yeah, I have a formal letter relating to that, and the amount is $323,520 from the accessibility for parks program going to recreation center outdoor, accessible play project. That's what you're referring to, is that right? Okay. Yeah. I brought this along just in case anybody didn't have it. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's wonderful.
You're breaking out the fancy letterhead.
Hey. This is, yeah.
I see it.
Okay. I didn't put it there.
It's official.
Thank you, Mr. Dillinger. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else from any other committee at this time? All right. Thank you for, for those reports. We will now go to the manager reports. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, Town Council, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Manager Miller to give an overview of the Talk of the Town.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just a quick review of the March edition of Talk of the Town. We have several follow-up items that council asked us to follow up on in the last couple weeks, and so we're either in process of making the appropriate contacts for those follow-ups or in the process of completing that work ourselves. So specifically, there were some flooding issues at Smith Drive and New Ran Road, and so that work is being addressed by, by Public Works. There's a large pothole at Garner Road and New Ran Road, and so we've reached out to DOT regarding that issue, and we hope to have that work completed here in the next few weeks. There's also a drainage box at that location that needs to be replaced. That's going to take a little bit longer to do that work, but it's something that Public Works is coordinating with Department of Transportation. We had several codes compliance issues that brought to our attention or a request of some follow-up, and you'll see probably the one we're most excited to see is the demolition at the Joan Sausage Road site for that building. So that process is moving forward, and we hope to be able to have that permit, be able to provide that permit to go ahead and have the demolition completed. With this nice warm weather that we've had so early in the year, it also means that the grass is starting to grow a little bit more earlier in the season than we were used to, and so we've had some, a few issues around town regarding some concerns of tall grass. And so Public Works has been trying to address those in our right-of-ways and public areas, and code compliance has been trying to address it with private property owners. And then there's just a few other items that have been reported under codes compliance, and we provided an update on the monthly report as well. The finally, final piece I wanted to share with you is our Garner Info Monthly Analytics. As you're aware, this is the app that we encourage residents to use to submit requests or concerns to us that allow us to follow up on those issues. For the last month, we've had a total of 27 requests come through the app online, and the top two requests by type include graffiti and temporary sign violation. And it's interesting, we're starting to see the seasonality of the complaints again, too. So depending on the season, there tends to be some that rise to the top compared to others. Of those requests that we received, 86% have either been addressed or completed in some way or in progress, so that's very good. And over the last 30 days, we've seen an increase in our police department having to respond to some of these issues. And when you start to see what the requests are about, you can start to see where law enforcement gets involved. So that's it for my presentation. I was just providing the highlights from the, the March report, and we are happy to answer any additional questions the council may have.
Okay. I have one in a minute, but I'll see if counsel has any, based on your reports here, Mr. Miller. Anybody?
I believe the graffiti issue was in an isolated area. There were several, two or three or four.
I believe so. I believe so.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
There's probably at least three areas that got tagged throughout town.
Really?
Yeah.
Just have a question in reference to a previously request that was asked to check the timing of the lights at the intersection of US 70 and New Ran Road. Will we be able to update on that?
I know that request was submitted, and our town engineer was going to follow up. Let's see, I think she stepped out. So we'll have to follow up on that, but I know there's been some contact made regarding taking a look at that timing issue.
And since that was mentioned, I think, I guess all the council and several staffers see the concern from the residents over at Hunter's Mark. I think the town manager can update us on the concern there about the, the turn lane light or getting out of the neighborhood was problematic, and I believe you said that's been referred to DOT? Is that right?
It has been referred to DOT by the town engineer, and then I, there was an email also from the developer that had been in contact with his consultant about talking to DOT about that also. So I think it's being looked at.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that update. Any other questions on the, on the report here? Thank you so much. Appreciate the follow-up on those items for sure. Okay. Mr. Attorney?
I'll go through, I'll go through the rest of the manager report. So that was just the first of several.
First item there.
Yeah, I'll go through.
Please, go right ahead.
First thing I want to do is to reintroduce Paul Paget, but introduce him as the new inspections director. So I think this is his first council meeting, official council meeting, as the inspections Department Director. So congratulations, Paul.
So far, I don't believe we have any questions for you, but we'll see. It's too early to say. We'll let you know.
He's been hanging around at a few meetings.
Oh, I know he has. Yeah. Okay.
He'll be glad that we get out early. We'll be getting out at a reasonable time tonight. I won't say early.
Okay, Mr. Manager, recognize your father.
All right. Next thing I want to talk about is the spring unprepared yard waste and trash pickup has begun, started this week, and we're asking residents to have their waste items out at the curb by 7:00 AM on the Monday, that their collection is scheduled to begin. They should have a schedule that was sent out, or if not, there's information on our website at garnernc.gov. The third item, we also continue to accept public comments on the draft character land use elements or clue. Update to the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. You can visit garnerforward.com to make any comments or review the draft and submit feedback. We'll accept input until Thursday, March 23rd, so just a couple more days. On Saturday, March 25th, we will have the spring big sweep and litter sweep. It starts at 8:45. If anyone interested in participating, you can meet at the Holly Shelter at White Deer Park, and you'll be assigned the area to clean up and go out and clean up either the roadside or along the waterways. So bring good, comfortable, safe shoes with closed toes and drinking water and sun protection because it is going to be warmer than it's been here lately. The award-winning bluegrass band, Balsam Range, plays at the Garner Performing Arts Center on Saturday, March 25th at 7:30, and tickets are nearly sold out, so visit garnerperformingartscenter.com soon as possible if you're interested in trying to attend that show. And then on March 26th, which is Sunday, the April Foods Day Truck Rodeo is back in downtown Garner, and I don't know if Councilmember Dillinger wanted to say something more about that. I'll save it, or Behringer, or, so I won't give too many details. I'll leave that for your report.
Okay.
And then the last thing I have is the spring extravaganza at Lake Benson Park on Saturday, April the 1st, kicks off at 10 o'clock.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Counsel, do you have any questions from the manager's report? Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
On, on East Main Street at the intersection of St. Mary's Road, there is a pile of trash that looks like it was in the railroad right-of-way. There's a dump there. I don't know whether that's a part of the initiative we have going on now with the cleanup, but there is a pile on the left, on, in, in the railroad right-of-way. It's quite obvious it's there.
Or is it bagged?
No, it's not bagged. It's like the trash is just dumped on the side.
Okay. All right.
Intersection of St. Mary's and East Main Street.
All right. We'll take a look at getting that up.
Anything else, Mr. Vance?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dillinger. Okay. Ms. Behringer.
I have a couple things. I'm sorry. I attended the North Carolina Main Street and Rural Planning Centers Conference last week, and our former DGA Director, Maury Howe, received the Main Street Champion Award for us this year. So we're happy to see her receive that. And also, an award application was submitted for our rec center being the best improvement, best landfill improvement, and we received the award for that as well. So it took us, what, five years to get the rec center, but it is being recognized as, as something awesome, so we'll make sure we do it.
Infield?
Infield. Definitely does say landfill. Oh, my gosh. Infield. Infield. Strike that, please. Infield.
Mr. Singleton.
Well, for that particular building, it might have taken five, five years, but what started out as a, as a need for a community center started out in 1986. So it morphed from a community center into the rec center, and we all know the issues getting open, but it's up and running and very well-used and full, and they don't have enough parking. I've already heard from people who complain about parking, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, really going to be concerned when the project directly decided begins construction, and there'll be some parking that's existing now that will not be accessible. So that's going to be interesting. But anyway, we'll cross it, rinse and we'll get to it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Just that we've got baseball opening this coming Saturday, two, two locations. I think South Garner is at 9:00 and 11:00 at Garner Baseball.
Yeah. Lions Field. Yeah. Okay.
Providing the weather's cooperative. Here lately, who knows?
We should hope so.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Go ahead.
Can I give more details about the food truck rodeo?
Please, yeah.
I wasn't sure if they were going to, but, so it is Sunday. Start set. It's noon to 5:00, and you can visit downtowngarner.com for more information, and that'll tell you the details and information about the food truck lineup, so.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
I was going to ask, counsel, are any of you in a position where you were going to try to attend the MD Logistics Grant Opening Ribbon Cutting on Thursday, the 23rd? I think you probably get an email on that, but the mayor will be there along with some others. I believe you said you couldn't be in, yeah, okay.
I'm trying to make it.
Okay. 10:00? Am I right, John? Jody? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. And I want to publicly thank Mayor Pro Tim Vance for covering for me on several different occasions, I guess, while I was out of town. Well done. And so thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. That's all for that. Ms. Jones, I haven't given you a chance, did I? Or did I?
I actually had something tonight.
Oh, okay.
No, I just wanted to let counsel know that I'll be attending the Municipal Attorney's Winter Conference this Thursday and Friday, so I'll be out of the office.
Okay. You'll be available by phone, right? You didn't really say that, but that's...
Yeah, I'll be available by phone or email.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And thank you very much for the reports you've been giving to us from the legislature and all the ruminations that are going on down there that we need, we need to know something about. Go ahead, Mr..
One other thing I'd like to mention is on the 28th will be the VA Hospital Groundbreaking, and I believe, is that 10:00? I'll have to look at my...
I'm checking.
I think that may be the right time. The 28th, you said?
Correct.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I've got it for, yeah, 10:00.
Yeah, 10:00. Yep.
At the, at the site out there, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if you...
We'll, I don't believe we've received updated details on that since the original, so we will try to get further details and communicate that to counsel to let you know.
Yeah, I think I have it in here as a save the date, so there's probably more details coming, so be, be aware of that if you will. All right. I think I covered everybody on council. Anybody have anything else? You're clear? All right. I believe we've covered our agenda. I want to thank you all again for...
Mr. Mayor, I know I've been relatively talkative tonight, but a few more things to add. I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was going through the council reports here, but just a few things I want to add, and one, last we had opportunity while the mayor was out to attend the, and greet the Triangle Area Economic Developers Meeting held right here on Main Street at the distillery downtown. That was an event that was well-placed to put together by our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Nate Glover, Grover, Grover, and it was well-attended. And, and that was on Wednesday, and on Thursday had the opportunity to attend and make remarks at the Bus Rapid Transit, BRT, a press conference on Thursday, downtown Raleigh and Moore Square, where there are Congressman Nichols and Ross, and also the DOT Secretary and Raleigh Representatives and Wake County Representatives were advocating for the approval of $77.8 million to, for a transportation project that will move Garner and the region forward, and that is BRT in the southern region. And it was a great event and a great opportunity just to advocate for that project. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Vance. Yeah, some exciting things going on, and again, we talked about the grant money. I want to commend, I guess, Parks and Rec again and others who may have applied, but it's very exciting to hear about the town, both in public and otherwise, getting information or notification of some of these, some of these grants for sure. So if there's nothing else for the good of the cause, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move.
Okay. Motion properly made and seated. If you favor the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. And it is approved unanimously, and I will declare that this meeting of the Garner Town Council is adjourned. And we'll expect to see, I guess it'll be a work session next time, right?